I'd like to welcome everybody out to our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 6th. We'll start this meeting with Commissioner Warnock giving, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate that. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes from our last month's meeting. I think Commissioner has had a chance to review that. I'll vote for a motion on it.
Yes, I'll make the motion. Do we approve the minutes?
Motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, passes. Our next item of business is a public hearing on a conditional use permit for the AT&amp;T Tower at Hunter's Crossing.
You guys get me first today?
Great.
Alright, so, this is located at 2505 East Canyon Road. And the property here contains just over two acres. It's currently zoned public facilities with the general plan designation of public facilities as well. And the applicant has requested that a conditional use permit be approved for proposed 80-foot monopole and cell tower for AT&amp;T. The telecommunications tower and related components will include the pole, the antennas, a generator, some fencing around the base, and all required utilities to make it run. This is the same location that in 2022, the Planning Commission previously approved a cell tower, but the building permit expired, so it was never constructed. In the city, some background, I guess also, in the city's public facility zone, wireless communication facilities require a conditional use permit. Why this is presented in front of you guys today. If you go forward a couple slides. See, there's our zoning in our general plan. You can go forward one more. So that's the site plan. It'll be located, if you go back one real quick, it'll just be located down here. And there's actually another existing pole just north of it. And then if you go forward one, perfect. So yeah, this configuration has, I believe it's nine antennas, three on each side. There's a few different kinds of antennas that they have. But, yeah, the DRC recommended, they recommend approval of the proposed AT&amp;T cell tower at Hunter's Crossing per the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Fairly straightforward. Do you guys have any questions, though?
How many other telecommunications towers are in this little area?
There's just one at the moment.
And the subject area is the, that little box that's abuts the street, closer to the street?
Yep, yep, it's that one right there, yep.
And it's gonna be a second cell tower?
Yeah, this'll be the second one on the site, yeah. There's also, I guess, some more background, some-
Is it taller than the other one, or the same height, or it's shorter?
I believe the other one's 80-foot also. I think they're both 80-foot poles. But I guess some other background, there's some power infrastructure here, and then there's a culinary well on this side of the site as well. So, there's a few things that are, that are already on the site.
The City Council approved a lease for this two years ago, back when the conditional use was approved, but it was for a smaller footprint. And so the equipment they're proposing now just about doubles the size. It wasn't very big, went 300 square feet to 600 something. So, I believe they're working with a lease amendment to get that additional footprint approved.
With a higher rent?
I honestly don't know the term, but sure, I mean, it should be-
Should be, twice as big.
I think we talked about same, same rent rate, but, you know, per square foot, so whatever that works out. At least that's the starting point. But I'm not sure where that is yet. I apologize.
So if it's, if it's approved, it would need to be contingent upon them securing a lease to do it?
Yep, it's condition number five.
Good.
Any else? There's no other questions. It's a public hearing. Is anybody here to offer any thoughts or opinions on this matter? If you are, please approach the microphone. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jason Hadley. I work for Smart Link, and we represent AT&amp;T. So, we're the ones that are trying to get this approved. So I, I just wanted to thank staff and be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. I guess kind of to address, we are working on an amendment to the lease, that is true. This is a project that was approved a couple of years ago. At the time, AT&amp;T was going through some changes in their budget, and so that, that building permit lapsed and never got built, so we're back here trying to get it re-approved so that this time we can get it built. So, happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For coming.
Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, anything to talk about? If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion on the subject.
I move that we approve the conditional use permit for the AT&amp;T at Hunter's Crossing. Or, the, uh, what's the word? Anyway, subject to findings and conditions.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion approved. The next order of business is a zone change. This is also a public hearing. It's for Goodwin Acres.
Thank you. The next two items are related, so we'll present on both of them, and then we have separate motions, if that's alright. So the first item is the zone change, and it's associated with a master plan development, which the preliminary plat is the second item for the Goodwin Acres. If we can go to the next slide. Oh, so this is the subject property here. There's an existing residence on the property that will remain, and it will be on the largest lot, Lot 14 within the proposed subdivision. If you recall back when this area was annexed, the Goodwin, Goodwin Minor Annexation, I believe it was called, the zoning of R115 was given at that time. Now that the applicant's looking to do a master plan development, they're gonna amend that zoning to be R115 with the MPD overlay.
Including the existing lot?
Correct. So if we go to the next slide, and the next one. So this is the proposed preliminary plat. Existing house would be here on this larger lot. We have improvements to 100 South here. New road that would be constructed here with connections to the south and to the east for future development. So we do have recommendations from the DRC on the zone change. They recommend approval with the findings as listed. And then with the preliminary plat, we had lengthy discussion about the proposal. A few things to point out. We would be in compliance with the master plan development as far as the average lot sizes. If we look at the plat, there are a few, half of the lots fall under the 15,000 square feet, but as an average, they're over 15,000. We do have a request to reduce the rear setback to 20 feet. Majority of the lots do lap 125 feet in depth, which is the minimum if, if they did a standard R115 subdivision. Most of them are close to that. The DRC did feel that would be appropriate to reduce that rear setback to 20, 20 feet, excuse me, instead of 15. As it's a master plan development, we do have a street tree plan that's been provided, and where it's single-family product, the home elevations would be compared against the master plan standards at the time of building permit. So we do have the approval recommendation from the Planning Commission for the plat as well. One of those specific conditions, obviously, is, is that the City Council takes action positively on the zone change. And then we also do have the recommendation on the reduction in the rear setback. So as far as remaining improvements, there will be full improvements along 100 South. And then the area along the power corridor, which you see on the east, or on the west, excuse me, and then the south, that would be vinyl fencing along the corridor. Any questions for staff?
I have a couple. What is, when you say average lot size, that's including, that's throwing this one in, which is skewing it up? Or are you, are you just including these lots that are gonna be developed?
So we include the large lot, but we only count it up towards double the zoning requirement for the zone. So per the code, it can count as a 30,000 square foot lot at its most. And I don't recall off the top of my head how large it is. Let's say it's an acre, we wouldn't count that in its entirety. The code just allows it to be counted up to 30,000 square feet in this point.
What is, what, I can't read, this is too small for me to see tonight, it was too small for me to read on the attachment also. What are these lots through here? What, what size are they?
The lowest are in the 13s, and then we have some over 15.
Okay. Brandon, what are these structures here?
So those are existing accessory structures, excuse me, barns, outbuildings and whatnot. There is a note on the plat, so because the applicant's proposing to put the property lines where they are, those would become nonconforming as to setbacks. So there is a note on the plat that they'll need to remove portions or relocate the buildings to comply with the five-foot setback.
The 20-foot setback, right?
For the accessory structures, they can go down five, based on whatever height they are.
But they don't have to, they don't have to conform, right?
They do, because they're proposing to put the, the property line, which creates the setback issue.
That's good. I was, that was my concern, you solved that.
Thank you.
So until the rest of these adjacent lots are developed, we have one access coming in, this dead ends into a field, this dead ends into a field, right?
Yes.
Fire is okay with this coming in, this is just a hammerhead for this to turn around in, or?
Yep.
Access is okay?
Yes.
So they're okay just moving these structures then, even though they're on a-
We're modifying them, removing portions of it.
I think we have a, don't we have a view of this? You can see what those structures are, are they not?
I believe there is in this slide, is there, or maybe it was in the staff report.
One of the reports, I saw a picture of it.
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
Right here.
And the plat keep, is far enough away from the power line easement and everything, good?
Correct, and so there, you can see the property line here.
Yep.
And then there is one easement that comes into the property, and then there's a temporary construction easement that is going away. That will be updated on the final plat.
Okay. So can, can a structure be built beyond this dotted line to 20 feet from the boundary line, or no?
Yeah, so when the, the depth here is 68, 68 feet, or excuse me, 53 feet.
53, from the property line to the property line in the front? With the 25 foot-
No, from the front property line to the rear setback.
Okay, but with, but do they, do they need a, is it 25 feet from the front to the garage?
It, it's a scale, so we have a certain setback to the living space, then to the garage, and then to a side, side little garage.
And you think dwelling structure could go there and be okay?
Yeah, the applicant worked on a couple different layouts here, and on this lot with our building official, just to make sure that they could place a home.
Okay, great.
And is, is that our setback, or is that the easement from the power line?
That's the easement that will go away.
Okay, okay.
It's a temporary construction easement to the city that was for an irrigation project.
Oh, okay.
And it had a sunset of when the project was completed, or a date of next summer, and I believe the project's been completed.
So the bolded line is where the-
The bolded line is the property line. It's this faint line that will go away.
It's Lot 4 that looks like the toughest one, but if you've, if you've measured, you've measured.
Yeah.
This, this buildings, I mean, these buildings, I'm looking at them on the, on the report, and they're pretty substantial. So, good on them for being willing to move.
Yeah, we, we gave them the option, and obviously they could move property lines elsewhere, but they opted to go with the lot sizes and configuration that's here, and make modifications to the buildings. Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Nope, thanks, Brandon. Does the applicant want to address us at all? You don't have to. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Do you live in the, are you-
Come up to the podium. If we have a question, come up to the podium. Introduce yourself, and then the last, what?
My name's Patrick O'Brien. I'm with the development team.
Great. Do you live in the home there?
No, so the homeowner is who we're purchasing from. And our engineers had the discussions with the seller's agent about taking down some of the structures. Some of them can be taken down in, in a section. So the whole structure wouldn't need to come down just for it to comply.
How tall is the tallest structure?
I don't know, that one.
Taller than two stories, or?
No, they're not that tall.
Oh, they're not tall.
Like car, carport that's had an enclosure put on it.
I was worried if you had like a 40-foot tall.
No.
Casting shade.
No, no agricultural structures or anything.
Alright.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak about this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any other thoughts or things to discuss? So this is, you presented on both options. That public hearing was for both options, right? That public hearing, I just closed this for both agenda points, okay? But we'll have our, we'll have our motions one at a time?
That's best.
I move that Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change of the Goodwin Acres, subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next.
Do we have to wait till that's voted on by the City Council in order to approve the preliminary plat, or no?
You could move to approve the preliminary plat contingent upon the approval of the zoning by the council.
Okay.
Yep, condition two.
Okay. Alright, so I move to approve the preliminary plat for this master plan development in our 115 zone with the MPD overlay, based on the findings and contingent on the findings and conditions.
Are we approving it, if it's a master plan development?
I think we do, no? Is it a recommendation?
It's a recommendation for the zoning.
Oh, I recommend, I- I, I move that we recommend to the City Council the approval.
Do you want to restate it?
Do I need to restate it? Okay, let me start over.
We're on the plat now.
We are the land use authority, but when it comes to master plan development, I think it bumps to City Council.
Does it? Okay.
I'm gonna answer in the form of a question here. They are land use authority for a-
It's written as if you're approving it.
But in this case, the preliminary plat can only be approved with the master plan development overlay.
Right.
They already acted on that, on approving the overlay, so that-
But it's conditioned upon the council.
The plat and the master plan development approval on this one's really tough.
We can pass it both ways if you want.
I think I've already said it both ways, so we're good.
Shawna has said it both ways, so I'm good. Throw out what you need.
I think you're recommending.
Okay. Alright, I move that we recommend the approval of the master plan development in the R115 zone with an MPD overlay to the City Council.
Based on?
Based on the findings and conditions.
The plat. Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you for redoing that.
All the words are in there somewhere.
Yep, just put together whatever you want. Next order of business is a preliminary plat, the Nelson Property Industrial Subdivision.
Alright, so the proposal is for two parcels that total roughly 17 acres. They'll be combined into a one-lot subdivision in an industrial zone, the I-1 zone. And with this preliminary plat, they'll be dedicating a right-of-way on the west and the north sides. Just so that the Planning Commission is aware, the DRC reviewed a concept plan for property east of this that borders the, the eastern property line that you can see here.
Here, or here?
No, it's south. The, the farthest east portion of this oddly shaped piece of property.
So right here?
That's the Westridge Development that's approved and halfway built.
Yeah, it's just further east of that.
What did we do?
We want this? So help us. We're not sure. I'm not sure. Speak for me.
So this property line, it's this property right here.
Okay, yeah.
A concept plan was submitted and reviewed that would likely connect to this property. So that way, there's some cohesiveness, but with this, with this preliminary plat, it's just to basically combine those two parcels into one lot.
And we've already approved that, or just the DRC has reviewed it?
Just the DRC has done an initial review. We just wanted to make you aware of that.
What, what use is this? I can't hear you.
Oh, is it this here?
Yeah, that's the Blunk Residence, which was the concept that was reviewed.
Okay.
Right here.
Sorry, I thought it was here, but it's here.
It's a residence, wow.
Currently, but it's proposed to be developed industrially.
Okay.
By the property owner?
Yeah.
Any, any other questions, I'd be happy to, to help out.
What if it doesn't get, what if it just stays a residence?
And it's a legal nonconforming.
Does our industrial zone take into account adjacency to residences at all, the, the code itself?
For the site plan.
We have some development standards that come in, types of screening.
So I was thinking-
Not trying to go off on a tangent, the house is zoned rural residential, so it's, it is what it is and can be maintained, but what we're looking at is the subdivision to the west of it.
I didn't quite hear what you said. I'm sorry.
I was just answering the question of-
I know, I just wanted to hear, yeah.
House, it's on a separate property, not what's being looked at tonight, and it is zoned rural residential, so it can remain if it chooses to. And then to answer Joseph's question, the, the considerations as far as what this property surrounds would be at the site plan stage, whether or not there's any buffers or walls or things of that sort. If it continues to be rezoned and developed industrially instead of a house, then those, some of those would go away.
That's, that's all I have for you. I didn't, I didn't intend to complicate things, but this is for a one-lot subdivision combining two parcels. That's, that's what's up for review tonight.
Can you give a picture of the surrounding area? Do you have a map view or satellite view of the surrounding area?
Contingent approvals and stuff.
Can you zoom out just a little bit? Is there anything else that's going on in the area around it?
And it's helpful, too, that we just heard that landowner is actually trying to develop industrial right now, so that's good.
Okay.
So in the proposal, it talks about how, and this map confirms it, that, that there's other large industrial subdivisions, such as some of these other ones that we have approved or right close by. Okay.
Okay, this, this is also a, no, it does not. Okay, never mind. Commissioners, do we have any other questions?
I don't.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion?
You're waiting on me? You got it. Okay.
I'd like to recommend for approval, no. I'd like to approve preliminary plot map for the Nelson Property Industrial Subdivision pending the findings and condition of staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the next one, it is Title 15 Amendment. And this is also a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This one's kind of fun, a little bit different, and there certainly is more than one way to approach the request. I don't know if you've had a chance to read the correspondence that's been provided, it's not necessarily labeled in a real clear manner, but on the, the Comena Group letterhead, is some detail that describes what the applicants want to do, which is to build a facility, actually the lease space to a company that would build a 12-pickleball court facility. In this case, it would be in an existing, brand-new industrial building. Again, in this case, talking about a site that's on Third West here in Spanish Fork, but the proposed text amendment would apply to properties that are zoned industrial one wherever they are in the community. Again, this, I think, could be approached in a few different ways if the Planning Commission and City Council want to allow the proposed use. For example, I think it'd be very reasonable to take a position that as an indoor commercial recreation facility, a pickleball court would be allowed along with things like racquetball courts and tennis courts and various things like that. However, to have this use lumped under that definition, there would be a pretty stiff parking requirement that would come into play, which would require, in this case, three times the amount of parking is what these applicants think a facility like this actually needs. And that's, that's the basis for the majority of the information that they've provided in their correspondence to the city. So, at the applicant's suggestion and per their request, this is being proposed in order to create a use that specifically identifies indoor pickleball courts, mostly for the purpose of identifying a parking requirement for that use that the applicants think is appropriate. Which, in short, if you've had a chance to, to look through this, you might have noticed they're suggesting that essentially two and a half parking spaces per court is what they think based on what the other facilities that this particular, I believe it's a franchise, has with, again, other facilities in the state. That's two and a half spaces per court, plus some additional parking for employees. And again, that's considerably less than what would be required if maybe we lumped it into the probably best match that we have in our zoning code now by way of another use. So, in response, the, to the applicant's request, the proposal is to define indoor pickleball courts and to identify a parking requirement just for that. So we're going from being really broad to really specific. And the proposal would have a three pickleball court, I'm sorry, a three space per court parking, I'll get it right the third time, a three space per court parking requirement, also with revision that regardless of how many courts the, a facility might have, have to have at least 12 parking spaces for the pickleball court use as a way to allow these applicants to proceed forward, finish out the space, and get a business license, and to have an indoor pickleball court company operating here in Spanish Fork.
How many parking spots do we have at our pickleball complex? Right there, just adjacent to it, just north of the pickleball courts? How many are in that parking lot?
I have no idea.
Because it's often full.
We can do a quick count. We can give you a real.
Know how many courts are there? And we, that parking lot is often full.
Yeah, I think we have sixteen courts there. There are other things also probably that are driving some demand for parking right in that area, though.
The school, the elementary school?
Not.
Yeah.
Not summer evenings.
Where?
Right there. I'm wondering how many parking spots are there?
But there's ballparks and soccer and all that kind of stuff right there, too.
I'm often there when there's nobody else there but pickleball players and it's full.
Is that's full? So, we'll do a quick count and just see how that compares with what we're talking about here.
And what use did you say was similar?
Right, right, yeah.
And what were those parking requirements? You almost said it, I thought, but I don't know if you finished your thought. And if you did, I didn't hear you.
I think it's ten spaces per thousand square feet. I'll double check that here.
For like a tennis court? So, would our tennis court use require more parking or less parking?
The way it's currently defined, considerably more.
And tennis would.
You would think, right?
Yeah, you'd need less, you'd need less parking playing tennis than pickleball.
Yeah. So, I think maybe do align with what you're saying. There's probably some justification for retooling the code beyond just dealing with this.
Yeah, that would be my next question, is how married are we to our tennis court standard, right? That's.
What's the zone that it's current, that a pickleball court like this would, is, can go in?
I would say currently it could go in our industrial one zone and any other zone that we allow indoor recreation facilities in. So, I don't think it's a matter of it being an allowed use as much as it is how much parking should be required for the use. That's really the issue that the proposed amendment is potentially addressing.
I agree with that. I'm not opposed to the use in industrial.
Not at all.
It's indoors, like, it's all good.
In just a second, I'll have the.
Is there a stipulation in industrial that the pickleball courts need to be indoors?
One, roughly one fifty in this area.
Yeah, but in theory, could you have industrial zoning in this code and have like just outdoor pickleball courts in the industrial zone?
If we allow outdoor recreation facilities there, then I think you could.
But do we? Is this?
Not in this one.
Does this change?
Parking. This is the quickest way to look for that.
I don't know if I'm against that, though.
Either way, I'm not against it.
That's what I'm thinking through. I'm like, I don't know if I'm against it either way. Even with the lights, it's an industrial zone, it's like, I might not be against it either way.
Okay, I have a really rough guess here. This is not rocket science. Counted a hundred and fifty roughly stalls in this area here. And there's sixteen pickleball courts, which Brandon, with his fancy calculator, has about nine point three stalls per pickleball court. Granted, there's a whole bunch of uses surrounding it as well, but that is the non-scientific.
I mean, it's a bit different because there you kind of go up and you just kind of stand outside reserving your next court, so you're waiting in this place. You might schedule it so you know when to show up, so you're not stacking people on top of each other trying to get in. So, that could be different, but there you could have four to six cars per court pretty easy.
Easily.
I think it is, I've heard that it's common for people to line up here.
Oh, yes.
To play, right?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that's different with what we're talking about.
Then you have some BYU singles who would show up and.
I would guess, so is this Pickler franchise, you go and pay to do the, you go and pay to play?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's like a subscription thing or if you show up and.
Right, so it's different than what we have at our park.
Do you feel, sorry, DeShawn, I'm sorry.
I guess my other thing, too, is if they have six other, I mean, I was reading below here, if they've got six other franchises here in Utah, that they work with that much parking and it works well for them, seems fine to me.
We just don't know if it works well for them.
Yeah.
That's the problem. We don't know if it works well for them.
Oh, yeah?
And they're not here. And I wonder what they'd say if you say, so are people parking on the street in these locations? And I don't know what they'd say. I have no idea if there's enough parking or not.
It would be nice if they were here.
Four would be forty-eight stalls, five would be, you know, sixty.
Is it?
That's not a lot of parking stalls.
Dave, are you feeling comfortable enough about this use and the number of parking stalls that are necessary to say, yeah, three sounds good, three per court? Or do you think we'd benefit from maybe a little bit more research? I don't know what answer I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with three.
Okay.
And I'll mention a couple of.
Why are you, why are you comfortable with three?
I think it lines up with what has been represented as the parking that's provided at other facilities. So, in fact, it's just a notch above that by my math with what they would have for employees typically onsite and that type of a thing. And we're talking about, this is probably the thing that makes me the most comfortable with this project, but it wouldn't necessarily be true across the board. The development that this initial facility would go in right now has, I want to say about three hundred thousand square feet of building space built and a lot more parking available than just what would be dedicated for this use. So, there's going to be some inherent safety valve there.
I'm just worried about the next one.
And I want to, I need to get to that.
I'm more worried about the next one.
Now, here's, here's maybe.
Because, man, we just had a meeting last month where it was, what was it, a gymnastics place? What was the?
Kids' recreation.
Indoor playground.
Yeah. We're worried about parking, the traffic and people going back and forth. We're talking about an industrial place. So, I mean, do we have a layout of this? Oh, you're pulling it up, that's great. It's along Third West, right? So, we have PDM on one side and this on the other. And Third West isn't a road we want people parking on the side of the road.
We do not. That is true.
Could easily see that happening with twelve pickleball courts.
I love the idea of indoor pickleball courts. Do we know which one of these units this is proposed in?
I don't.
I mean, it doesn't matter for the Title 15, I'm just wondering for the specific case.
Yeah. It was kind of a, maybe once in five hundred year kind of a thing, maybe more frequent. Mr. Mann did some research for us yesterday. What community was it where they had the same company we're talking about here at a national tournament?
Yeah, there's a Pickler location in Kaysville. They have fifteen courts there. It's located in an industrial zone, similar kind of layout. And they had a large national tournament. And I believe that this, I don't know if it's just this franchise or typical with these type of uses is that you'll often have some seating as well for competitions that will occur occasionally. Kaysville City did say that they saw some parking spilling into the streets because that was the closest places to park to where the entrance to the Pickler was, so.
And is it, is it this building or this building they're proposing?
I believe it's the northern building where this one is. And I think they said it's going to be on the eastern side where there's extra parking up against the street.
That Kaysville location, David, was it also three stalls per court?
They actually, they reviewed the industrial complex site plan before the Pickler came in. Pickler came in afterwards, and so they didn't have a chance to review parking for that use.
But how many are there? When it's building to the street, but how many are, how many parking spots are available?
For the entire complex?
Yeah, for the.
I didn't, I didn't do a count of that location, but there's probably, I don't know, a hundred or so. But they kind of wrap around the building similar to this location.
Gotcha. A hundred or so, and we're talking about three times, we're talking about thirty-six, right?
So, is this, the, I'd love to ask questions of the Pickler people, but like.
I feel like, I'm going to be just direct, and I don't want to drag this out. Mostly, I'd much prefer to take your time on a December agenda with something else. But I think you should have the opportunity to ask those folks the questions that are coming up. I'm very comfortable suggesting that you consider at least continuing this, so you can get your questions answered by them. They should be here tonight. I don't know where they are.
I move that we continue this item.
Yeah, I'm going to start to aerial views of pickleball courts.
I have a motion.
What did she say?
I move that we continue this item.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion will be continued until you can arrange for this applicant to come and speak to us. I am pleased to be able to, I like.
Wednesday, December at the earliest.
I like the idea of an indoor pickleball court. It's going to be great for our community.
I do, too.
I just want to make sure we do it right, because it's not just one location, it could be hopefully a couple others.
Now, I want to mention this as well. We had quite a bit of discussion in the DRC meeting about a concern, not to contradict what you just said, Chairman, I think the idea that this is an appropriate location for that kind of a facility and that Spanish Fork residents probably would enjoy having that in Spanish Fork. Good things, but there is a tremendous investment being made in the area we're talking about. Speaking very broadly, the area around the airport, several thousand acres, so that that area can accommodate industrial development that will hopefully attract great jobs to the community and the kind of capital investment that helps pay for all the services, both municipal and otherwise, like schools, that are funded with property tax. And having, the concern that we've discussed as staff, which we'll probably have something ready for you and the city council to discuss in December, has to do with, well, what if we get an inordinate number of things like this? Whether it's pickleball courts, tennis ball, or sorry, tennis ball, tennis facilities, racquetball, maybe it's more likely, I love it, right, but, you know, batting cage, indoor baseball, practice facilities, gymnastics, volleyball, dance, you know, different things like that that really don't align with the investment that we've started to make and with the return that we hope to get on that. So, the idea that we will be discussing with you and the council is some type of, quote is probably not the best way to put it, it's more like identifying an appropriate cap by way of maybe how much building square footage can be devoted to these types of uses, maybe by zoning district, maybe by some geography or different things of that nature. I don't want to go too much farther tonight into the concept, but that is a concern that definitely has staff's attention. And we're at least going to propose something in an effort to address that.
So, could you put, I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is more extensive than what I was going to say, but could you put it in something like conditions or conditional use permit in, of that section?
Percentage of square footage, I think, is what they'll do.
Instead of just in the main allowed permitted uses?
If we were to make it a conditional use, it would be for another reason, but that's a possibility. If the goal is to say, hey, we don't want more than X amount of facilities of this type in this area, we would have to write a code that would do just that, or write language for the code that would do just that, which incidentally, there are a couple of other uses that will bring along with the recreational types of uses in the industrial zone. For example, we've talked about things like pawn shops. And in fact, I think at the close of the joint meeting we had with the city council, we discussed this a little bit. Other things like car washes, you know, having some type of cap on the number of car washes of a certain type that.
In the industrial zone?
Eligible, no, not necessarily.
Just in the city?
Quite possibly. Storage units is another one that we've been asked to look into. I think each of those for a different reason, but at the end of the day, the goal, as I understand it and see it, is to try to make sure that the city is getting the kind of land use inventory that the community wants, so. Don't want to necessarily end the meeting on that note, but just FYI, that's.
So, I have a question on that. So, between, I'm just thinking about some of the businesses that are in some of the buildings similar to this. As I'm going down North Main Street, there's rental facilities, there's paint stores. How, how would they vary in the revenue coming back to the city off of a place like this pickleball court that maybe employs four to six people as staff and has, you know, probably pretty good, if they're full, they have pretty good revenue coming in? How does that, is one much more valuable or is it about even?
Yeah, you know, the city would receive sales tax from what commerce they generate. I do not know.
That's just, that's a question for me, and then, because if I'm looking at a business that's going to have, you know, rental vehicles or used cars or something like that out and about in it or.
Those things, frankly.
This would be a nice, I would see this as a resident, as a nicer place as long as it is providing revenue back to the city.
There's a process.
Let us know how your discussion goes.
Yeah, there's a process that we will go through and it'll be discussed, but, yeah.
But I'm looking at these permitted uses and anyway, I'm just wondering, like, what are the targeted uses for that area around the airport? You know, and I'm, and I'm looking at permitted uses here and can, subject to conditions and conditional use permits and just wondering what kinds of things would bring more jobs and more, you know, more places that support that particular area. Anyway, I don't need to know that right now, just wondering about. Just part of the future discussion.
I can answer that in a couple of sentences now, as well as I'm ever going to be able to.
Sure.
We have some great industries in Spanish Fork today. I'll use HEDRO as an example. It's an aluminum extrusion plant. It's kind of an extreme example by way of it's uniquely heavy industry. I think still in a lot of ways, it's a good neighbor and it certainly, that company has been a great corporate citizen over the years. It is good for Spanish Fork City financially, as an organization. It's good for the city organization to have that facility in the community because it generates considerable property tax, given that it has really heavy machinery, expensive stuff that depreciates over a long period of time. It's also great for a community that has its own power system. Spanish Fork's public power city, the city receives a very, very small amount of profit from selling power, but when you sell it on the scale by which HEDRO uses it, it's a good thing for the system and the city. So, by way of the city, those are some of the direct benefits that we receive from that. And as a community, as a general rule, facilities like that do require labor with skill sets that warrant higher wages than some other jobs in a community do. And that, for me, is really where the quality of life benefit comes in for residents of the community, the region. I'm sure there are people that travel from quite a ways to work at HEDRO. But those are the two, you know, main things. It's revenue directly for the city, but it's also, you know, the quality of life and I would say economic impact of having better than typical jobs in a company. That's what we're trying to attract in a whole lot of building space that's being made available in our industrial area. And the thought, you know, right or wrong, is that things that might water down that effort are a threat to what we're really trying to create, and you could look at it from a lot of different perspectives. But that's, that's.
That makes sense, thank you.
Reasoning.
Do you have any other topics, first, before we adjourn?
Not unless you have anything for us. I think we've already passed out our, I'll call it a report of action from how the council proceeded with items that you'd seen before. We'll continue to provide those. But yeah, if you don't have anything for us, we're done.
Okay. I'd like, motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion a second.
Aye. Aye.
We stand adjourned.